Well, it seems like everyone's here so we can get started. So we'll call the meeting to order. So I'll be leading the meeting tonight as a little work session for us to get started on the city plan. This is to give Leslie a little bit of a break. The first thing that we'll do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have anything to add or change about the agenda? Okay. A theme and approved. And then next, we have comments from the chair. I don't have anything to add at all. There were some emails going around the last two weeks from the city. Is there anything notable?
I think maybe if you can just go over the RFP, fill it out, because there were some comments about that. So they bring everyone up to speed on that, because I don't think we've discussed that.
Yeah, so the city... So we got a municipal planning grant last fall to do a, basically a master plan for State Street. And then throughout the winter, there was some additional projects in the downtown. And so there was a desire to expand that to be the entire, basically downtown core, to do a downtown master plan, which I think a lot of us have talked about.
We can talk about that. But we did as a group. It's just been a little bit of a while, you know. We need our memories refreshed.
So that RFP went out over, well, two weeks ago, so...
Emery, since you don't work in state government, you might not know what RFP stands for. It means Request for Proposal. It's when we ask for people to submit applications, we call them bids, to hire them to do the work. So when we say we put out an RFP, it's that we're requesting that we receive bids from various consultants to, basically, do this work for us, which would be making a plan for State Street.
Yep. And now it will be State Street, including Berry and Main. Berry out to Hubbard, Main out to, I think, School. And so we have a little bit of Langdon, a little bit of School, a little bit of Elm, but primarily just that downtown core. And the idea is to do streetscapes, because it really isn't going to change a lot. The streetscape that's identified for State Street is probably going to be replicated for those same concepts, because you want to have a consistent theme. So it's probably not a big stretch to continue that. But it's also going to do a land use analysis and do a little bit, because it really came out of a discussion of the Confluence Park, which was discussed for Taylor Street. So the Taylor Street project, they're going to put at the confluence of the North Branch and Winuski, they're going to put in a park. And then they wanted to do one on the other side, where the pedestrian bridge comes over. We purchased three parcels over here, so the city now owns these parcels. We're going to put the bike path in, we're going to put the bridge in, and we've got one lot that's available for economic development redevelopment, and we had another parcel that was going to be a parking lot. And the question came up, what should we do? Should we keep with that plan of a parking lot in economic development? Or should we make the parking lot smaller? Should we remove the parking lot altogether and have a bigger park? Do we still want to use the economic development lot for economic development? Or do we want that to be some kind of pocket park or something? So that was kind of the questions that came up. So what we wanted to be able to do was have the consultant that's doing these downtown streetscapes to also take a look at our public assets that we have, the Jacobs parking lot, these three lots, the Heaney parking lot, you know, we have some parking lots behind City Hall, and just to kind of take a look at what our needs are based on what our land uses are. So do a little bit of a land use analysis and look at, you know, should we use this for parking? You know, if we take out, for example, if we take out the parking on Berry Street, which has been a long time proposal, because we need to connect our bike path, if we take that parking out, we might need to have that a parking lot to make up for those losses, those parking spaces. We just have to have a conversation where we start to balance things, not looking just isolated at one parcel. We really have to look at the downtown and go and say, what are our downtown needs? We know we don't have a lot of green space, and we should do more to have more green space, but we also have to balance these other needs of if we want bike lanes, we might lose parking. How do we balance all of our needs to kind of satisfy everybody's goals with a very limited number of resources? So that's the third piece. So there'll be the State Street streetscape, the Main Street Berry Street streetscape as part two. And then the third part is this land use analysis to help guide and inform the planning commission and city council on what should we do about what we call 12 Main Street.
Can you repeat that recap again? So we're going to be looking at the State Street?
Streetscape.
Okay. State Street streetscape.
Because that's the one that we already have a grant for, so we have to fulfill those grant obligations.
Right. Okay.
Then we will do the streetscapes for the rest of the downtown core, so that's, you know, Main Street and Berry and a few other smaller streets.
And I remember I was discussing that, because it made sense to, you know, while we're already doing that, to kind of look at it more as a unit. So Berry Street, others. And that's also a streetscape.
Streetscape, yep.
That is a hard word. Okay. And then the third piece was...
It is looking at the land use analysis and these other public parcels.
And the State Street streetscape is triggered by the work on the bridge? Is that right?
Yeah, and that was triggered by the fact that we have to replace that bridge in three or four years. So the hope is, if we've got a good conceptual plan, then we might be able to talk about, do we want to realign the curves to make wider sidewalks? The sidewalks are quite narrow on parts of State Street. It would be nice to have wider sidewalks, but if we're going to make wider sidewalks, something else has to go. On-street parking, maybe a turn lane, you know, we really have to start to look at, you know, how could we make those wider? Other people may argue, we want to have bike lanes. Well, if we want to have bike lanes, same question. Where would we, who, what do we give up to have bike lanes? And does it make sense to give those up? And if we gave up parking, where would we replace that parking?
So when do you think that, like, what's the timeline going to be as far as us having a product to look at?
Well, April 12th is when it's, is when the, I think it's April 12th when the RFP proposals are due. They would then have about a year to complete the project, but I think they're going to be touching base. Our discussions that we had before with the net zero winners, the Team Bridges and the other proposals, I think are going to factor in a lot more. So I think if we're going to invite Team Bridges, I would wait until after we have a consultant onboard, so we can have them hear that presentation as well, because I think as they're working on this, we really should be integrating. If we're going to integrate it, that's where we would integrate those ideas, is into that downtown master plan. There may be pieces that are outside. You know, Team Bridges talked about remote parking and using the railroad as a shuttle to get people in and out of downtown. That may happen outside, but what happens in the downtown core, we should really have reflected in that downtown master plan.
So do you anticipate getting proposals from entities like the Team Bridges? I mean, I know, they're kind of a group.
Yeah, we've, I've heard, I've received interest from at least three separate consulting firms right now. At a certain point, sometimes they start coming together. Sometimes two of them will come in, one will be a landscape architect, and another one will be, you know, more in the traffic side, and they might come together and put in a single proposal. So I'm not sure where they'll, if they'll start mixing together at a certain point, but right now, I know we have at least three interested consultants.
Okay. That's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Any more comments?
I'll throw one other quick one, just to go and say that on Wednesday, we will be having the first, maybe the only, potentially zoning, for the interim zoning. And we put that together and we forwarded that, the interim zoning, for consideration. And so council will be taking that up Wednesday. So they may hear it and vote that day, they may hear it, make some changes, and want to have another hearing. It's up to them.
Wait, wait, can you back up a little bit? Because I know we're having a public hearing on some changes, but what are they going to be hearing?
All right, so they're hearing the interim changes, which were just the steep slopes, not buildable area, just steep slopes, 30%.
Ah, the landscape.
And the landscape rules.
Right. We felt like those were a priority, we wanted to get them.
Yeah, because they will impact projects that are being applied for, for the spring construction season. And because it takes a long time for us, you know, our hearing's not until April on the permanent changes, then it will be time before it goes to council, and then council will have to have hearings. And so those probably won't be ready till the end of June, before they're actually adopted. By then, you've kind of missed a chunk. So hopefully, this gets the important fixes through, so we can get some good projects moving.
Do you think you'll need one of us on hand to explain anything?
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
But I will be there, and they have been, the council has been briefed on it already, so...
What time is it?
It's good, this one will be starting at 7:00. So the public hearing is scheduled for 7:15. So it was initially warned for 6:45, then council had a meeting set up, an executive session that's going to go 6 to 7, so they had to push the zoning hearing to 7:15, so...
That's right, at bedtime. It's like the worst time.
I could feasibly make up. Anyone else see? Want to team?
We'll remember that.
Actually, I have a birthday party to get to after that, so...
Oh, right.
Yeah. It's fine. Okay, so I'll plan unless, unless we hear through email that someone else wants to attend and represent us, which is open. Any other business? Okay, so the business number four on the agenda, general business, comments from the public, and there's no one here, so we can move past that to our work on the city plan, which is where things become kind of unstructured, I guess. We have, we have tracing paper, and we have loads of ideas. Anybody have an idea about where to start?
I mean, John...
Sorry, I got a text message.
Is it a text from the future, how familiar? Future generations?
No, it's the future.
Looking for microphone, I saw two ones. That is over there.
Oh, and I'm going to, I'm going to take notes and everything, and I'll type those up and email them around, and I guess potentially put them, I could put them on the website.
Yeah, so we could potentially project this, although do we have an HTML?
That sounds like a fancy word for toggle.
If not, you can actually just go on the website.
Do that.
Need some sort of conversion.
One of those. I could go get one of those, if you want.
Are these maps the same, except this one's a bit more zoomed in?
Yeah, this one is supposed to be townwide, as much as possible.
Yeah.
Captures most of it. This one is zoomed into the downtown, just because it's a little bit...
Where the action's at.
Thank you for asking that, because I was trying to figure it out.
I didn't remember the thing. Look at that one.
I feel like I should know this.
Where is that?
It's a trick question. That's actually Berry over there.
So this is Montpelier, the funding commission.
This is where Mercury's in red gray.
Yeah. So I put two, links to two maps up on our plan website. One is one that I made like in August 2017, and probably could be updated, but I haven't had time to do that. Or, I guess if people have ideas on what could be on it, I could do that instead of going through and aimlessly adding or removing things. And then the other one is just a map that everyone here has access to, that you can add points to, or lines or draw on, and add to like a maintain, evolve, transform, sort of funding commission workspace.
Do you want to just go over the transform, evolve, maintain language? Emery hasn't been here for that discussion, and we could all use the recap.
Yeah.
You're just our excuse to, like, remember things we should know.
So, so hanging up some, we have to come up with a city plan, and that has various components to it that we need to include. One of those should be a, something that articulates vision, like what are we, why are we doing this? And a good way to do that is to try to document, like, what about our city do we want to change or not change? So someone should be able to either look at a map, and it's not only things that can be mapped, but looking at a map can be a helpful way to do it, and understand, like, in Montpelier, in 20, 30, 50 years, what's going to be different about it. And making sure that we all understand, or that we're working towards a common vision is important. So going through an exercise where we start just putting it down on paper, even if we don't all agree, or that it's all crystal clear, can just be a good way for us to identify things that everyone agrees with, or things that maybe need more work, and then we can start to prioritize how to, how to get there, and how that will happen. So the idea of putting things into baskets around, what do we want to maintain? So what do we like about Montpelier? We may need to take actions to make sure that doesn't change, or what do we want to completely transform? And then the third category is what do we want to evolve? So maybe it's not something in between the two. So that's generally the concept around the maintain, evolve, transform, mapping, exercise. And it's a good way to, and if we're going to collect information from other people, we can do away with those labels if we want, and we can just ask, you know, what do you want to change about Montpelier, if you could change anything? And we have a tool now that Stone Environmental is working with Public Works, that I think we should be able to use to gather input from Montpelier's citizens as soon as, I don't know, if I can get the keys to it, I could probably set something up. Stone should be able to take a lot of those map layers that we have and make them interactive. But in the meanwhile, I just created a simple Google map that we can all edit and have access to, and anyone can go to it, but unless they are, they've been included, never given editor privileges, they won't be able to add or change things.
So do we have a... Got one of these guys?
I doubt it.
Not even one of those.
I don't even know what that is, mate.
Go to that one?
No. Can you log into it?
Do you want to use mine? Well, that's mine. Do we have...
Oh, that'll work, yeah.
Well, actually, I can...
Old-school technology there.
Probably can't go too far, but...
Technically not my computer.
Yes, your name's on it.
Yes.
It's all in there.
Google Wells. Okay. I can hit the lights.
Yeah. It's just, you know, it's just the one that says council. Otherwise, we'll get the gardening club over here.
Size of a wave. There's three different notes signifying this.
After repeatedly turning off other people's lights.
So on our plan website, which at some point, we probably need to figure out what's going on here, how we're using it, but...
I think, I think it would help to set aside some time to kind of coordinate our efforts and how we're, yeah, how exactly we'll use it.
Yeah. If you go down to the bottom of the homepage, I just put these links up here.
I have the original, the painting, right there in my home.
Oh, here we go. You'll see two links. One is for a map with layers for the plan, and another, edit, maintain, evolve, transform, map. So this was one that I created back a while ago. If you click the little sheets of paper that are stacked here, it'll open up some layers that you can toggle on and off. You can see they include, you know, building footprints that are colored by use, our river corridors, flood hazard areas, parcels, sidewalks, wetlands, et cetera, natural communities from the Conservation Committee, probably like an old zoning district proposal that we should remove, because this was before, I think, we adapted the zoning, our sewer mains, water mains, various paths, et cetera. So...
So we made some of our zoning district decisions based on where the sewer mains and water mains ended, just for people's history.
And one of the things we'll, we'll eventually need to include in the plan is statute requires us to include a land use map, a future land use map, transportation plan, a utilities plan, and then another one that's more natural resource focused. So we'll have a lot of these components be separate maps included in the plan, but the maintain, evolve, transform one is really, to take all of those into consideration and come up with more of a vision statement, if you want. So this, this is, this map is just essentially, should serve as a reference point, and I can add or remove things as people want. We can even feed our maintain, evolve, transform points into this map if we want to have that as a layer to toggle on and off.
So when you say add, you don't mean just toggle that little check mark? You mean adding a whole other layer to that list?
Right, exactly, yeah. So in the evolve, maintain, evolve, transform, and I did this several minutes before coming here, so I came up with examples that are possibly not appropriate or the best, but and I created again these three categories, transform, evolve, maintain, and one for placeholder for questions or comments. So if you were to log in, and I'm guessing we're logged in as Leslie, because this opened in edit mode, if it were someone not logged in, or who doesn't have edit access, it just, you don't have the ability to edit. But with this, you can essentially just add a point or a line if you wanted. So let's say we wanted to, you know, transform the Historical Society Museum, which I don't know why we would, we probably don't want to do that at all, but let's list it as point three, so do away with history.
Yeah, this is a good thing you're editing that.
Yeah.
Museum of the future.
Do away with the museum.
Oh, my goodness.
I got married, by the way, so, I hope, let's not do that.
You'd be the last to get married there now.
And you can add a description. And if you save it, it'll go there. Maybe we decide to change that from a different category, move it there, and you can order them, they'll change the sequence of the numbers. If you zoom out, it'd be easier to see with the different base map. So you can see what our points are there. And we can just take that and have it feed into the other map as a layer if we'd like. You can also export it or view it as a table. We can add different categories if we want, aside from just description, if we wanted to have a priority ranking, or whatever we wanted to do, but I just thought...
Do we want to put in some right now? Just try it out? Does anyone have any?
So here, I put in, you know, Main Street Shaw's stone cutter intersection, make safer and pedestrian oriented, as a transform. You know, here, evolve the pedestrian connection between National Life and downtown.
Transformational could be the revive rail line for commuter rail service. I mean, that's one that has been proposed by Team Bridges, and a number of other people are looking into that. That would be a transformative project. It's not something that's here, we're not evolving and making it better, we're completely adding something new.
So we could do it as a line, but I'm not going to trace the entire railway.
Supposed to be light rail, I guess, or...
Yeah, it's just, well, there are two, two proposals. One that's going to, that Team Bridges, and we've actually been doing, trying to do a study, getting some funding for a study, which would look at just the Washington County line. So it goes from Montpelier junction to Berry City, and the idea is that could be just a light, light rail commuter trolley-type system. You know, we'd look at what cost effectiveness, whether it would work. That would allow for much better access. If you wanted to have commuter lots, if you wanted to move parking lots to the outside, that would work much better, because you could, if you lived in Berry City and worked in Montpelier, you could just go down to the Granite Museum and Park, jump on the rail line, you'd probably be faster using a rail shuttle to Montpelier than you would actually driving your car in the traffic. The other discussion that's been going on, which is more statewide, and we haven't been involved as much in, are folks who want to connect Montpelier to Burlington in Essex using the high-speed line on I-89. So that would be a much bigger, different project.
Have you guys involved in that discussion with the state?
It's, so it's, I mean, Blittersdorf is a private individual who has interest in trying to see that happen, so he's kind of putting his own money and his, his own capital behind it to try to see if he could get that to work. He's bought Bud cars, which are vehicles that would actually be able to make that journey, but there's a lot of cost involved in actually doing it.
If you tried to do it, cost and losses, you know, something like, we'd have to subsidize it to the tune of around $300 and some odd thousand dollars per rider, so...
Per rider?
We could just buy everyone a house instead, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that idea is still being pushed and considered, so I'm sure it's one that would at least make it on our list of things for conversation, whether we decide to include it in our final plan. Would probably come with a lot of input from the Transportation Committee and the public on whether that's something we want to pursue, or if that's just an idea that, you know, we're going to get a lot of ideas that people are just going to give us.
Either way, the real line right now, we can all agree, totally useless space. Either way, the rail line right now, we can all agree, totally useless space.
Yeah.
You know, something should happen. Whether or not it's rail, we probably don't know, but that may just be an outcome of the plan that we have a study or dedicated resources to figuring out how to effectively use that space.
I think the same thing could apply to the waterfront there too, right? I mean, you don't, maybe we don't know exactly how we'd like to transform it, but it seems like everyone in the city has an interest in wanting to see it be used better.
Downtown Dunderly or?
The waterfront strip along the rail line there, just those, all those parking lots. Sorry to cut you off, Leslie.
No, I think that was, I had a totally separate idea, so it's better to continue with this conversation.
If you accidentally add points, you can delete them by hitting the garbage can select. So, um, what do, do people want as useful as this?
Yeah.
Is it like, that's nice, we're not going to use it? Is it, um, give it a try, we can decide whether or not it's a good fit for us?
Let's plug in some more ideas. I mean, because we can take this and just put it on our website as a layer, you know, just like initial thoughts, brainstorming session.
Yeah.
So one I have, I don't think it's been, I don't know if it's been part of any of the proposals, but the base of National Life Drive, um, if you run down it, then you're kind of stuck running on a highway without a shoulder to get to the bike path. There needs to be some sort of connection, pedestrian access, whether it's, you know, via Green Mountain Drive, whether there's a crossing to get to Green Mountain Drive to get to the bike path or another way, but...
It has been talked about.
Yeah, I would imagine.
And the reason why it's difficult is because it's technically a limited access highway and you're not supposed to have sidewalks on a limited access highway. So that's where...
So what's the...
I would say, uh, add pedestrian access to connect National Life Drive and...
Green Mountain Drive.
Green Mountain Drive, yeah.
I think that's in our, it's in our gap analysis that we did for the Complete Streets Plan. Um, we, that was identified. And there were a couple of options that have come up for how to fix that. One is to move Green Mountain Drive down to make National Life Drive and Green Mountain Drive a four-way, and therefore you could put a light there. Green Mountain Drive doesn't have the problems anymore and that would exit into that parking lot for, um, Green Mountain Power.
Just add pedestrian.
What about U-32? Is there a need for some non-motorized connection through, is that something, is that something we'd want?
Bike path.
If you, if you could bike or ski to U-32 to the Art College of Fine Arts.
I think a lot of these will be able to populate through those various plans that we have. The Complete Streets Plan identifies a number of gaps that need to get fixed. Um, I think there's a, the green print that I think came up, Parks, and those guys, they have a plan that would talk about, yeah, just like that, a line that would connect those, um, on its way across. I think, I think the gap analysis talks about the sidewalk from U-32 down to, and we have a high school, but we don't have sidewalk on Callison Hill, I don't believe. So you don't have walking, you can't walk there if you happen to be a student. Um, we really should have bike lanes and side, and at least a sidewalk on one side.
Yeah. And I think cars drive pretty fast up there.
It's a shortcut.
It's tempting to because it's so wide, you know.
You can also add photos to all of these.
I've seen deer though.
I saw like a dozen deer on College last night crossing the street, I was like, what did they do?
Just one after the other.
Yeah, just like a huge clump.
Do we get rid of the deer?
Yeah. Eradication plan for College Street area.
It's a good idea.
So the idea with this map is that we would all take individual time and think about it because I'm like, this is just my beginning of thinking about it and I'd like time to do it, but I wasn't quite sure of the vision. Was there maybe that's worth discussing?
Yeah, I mean, I would think it would be great if you, over the next while, we think about it, even take photos with your phone and you can add those, uh, that'll like really bring it to life, I think. When you see something, you're like, I would like that to change in Montpelier, or I really like that, and we should identify that as something we value.
Are we, are we concerned about becoming unwieldy when we start to have several dozen points up here, or is that kind of the idea?
I think that's the idea, and then when we have some of these meetings, maybe we can go through and consolidate, clear some out or categorize, or we can see how, see how it goes. Not done this, so...
Yeah, no?
And I think, I think eventually we would be kind of breaking it into the different, well, eventually be thinking about it on a chapter by chapter level. I mean, at this scale, we're just getting ideas down to talk about, but at a certain point, when we start talking about the Historic Resources Chapter, we're going to have that discussion of the Historic Museum. And, and we're going to have that discussion about, do we match our design review to our historic district?
I'm imagining before we even get there that we start bringing in the committee's feedback, right? And I guess we could incorporate them along the same way?
Yeah, or we'll, we'll, we'll have like the, the townwide, I think, survey tool that we can see if there are any like patterns that emerge there. Um, we could, if we have our stuff done, a good amount of it done first, we can have it as a base layer that people could also potentially either, you know, vote up or down or something along those lines so that they're not just adding to things that are obvious. Um, and then the, the other part that maybe, um, let's see. All right, I can't. Don't think I can open that from here. I'm not going to go into Leslie's email. So, um, but is, is the spreadsheet, um, or the tables that, uh, I worked with Barb on to give the committee's guidance on, um, how they could submit what their goals are, um, and their strategies that would relate to those. So to have, have them list goals that you can measure, that someone can say, yes, we meant that, or no, we didn't. And then, you know, how, how do we measure that? Um, and then list out whatever related strategies are.
And that's, that's a little bit of the piece that I've been trying to work on in between meetings, is to try to go and start to pull some language together so that way the committees, when they start to meet to talk about this, they're not starting with, with nothing. You know, what do we already have in our plans that talks about, you know, what are our aspirations, what are our goals? And then say that these are just places to start the conversation and maybe they're pretty close to what everybody thinks, maybe they're not, but at least it's a place for people to start thinking. And it helps to, when you see it written out, to go and see how you would do something similar to that.
So do you want to, we want to practice doing some more? I mean, I think it helps me to do it a few times so we can determine what's, what falls into which basket. We've got the, we did a few transform, evolve. I mean, I think we want to increase affordable housing. I don't know how we would signify that on the map. Maybe there are certain spots where we want to encourage it?
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be perfect. Um, yeah, so...
That may be one that would just go into the questions and comments. That may be, uh, the affordable housing may be something that just doesn't fit on a point.
Well, I think it would be nice if we could nominate a spot, I mean, it's a discussion, right?
Yeah.
If we knew there was one, if we knew Saban's pasture is a great place for this and...
I mean, can you make like broad area? Or if you just do points, I guess you just do points.
You can, you can draw and make broad area, um, you can draw lines. You have to click the pencil. There we go. But in general, I think we want to increase housing opportunities in and around our, um, within walking distance of our, our downtown.
We may need to revisit what we think the radius is for that, because I know we've had discussions in here before and I remember debating, like mile and a half, two miles, like what's actually walkable? Do you factor in hills?
And close to the schools too, because like the whole Bailey Avenue place, people have to like walk a whole mile to get to the middle school and that, that can make people late to school.
Also builds character.
Especially in winter.
I can tell Aaron grew up in Nebraska.
It's nice that they're, that they are, that that's considered walkable though, that they're, that they are actually walking from that.
Yeah. Lots of people, like their parents work in the town, so they have to make early stuff. Sometimes they have to.
We tend to focus in and around the downtown, but we should also...
I mean, just as an example of a maintain, you could, uh, we might get comments from a place like College Street or up by VCFA to maintain the historic character of this, you know, residential neighborhood. You know, maybe it's College Street past, you know. We might get comments about maintaining the character of a neighborhood, whether it's historic or not historic. Town, town hill may say we want to maintain...
We've got to define character.
Yeah, I think we avoid ever putting the word character in every event because it's, it's meaningless. There's got to be something about it.
I think you're right. We're going to get that comment, but I don't know that we need to put it in right now because I, I feel like a more...
Or we should encourage them to articulate what about that character is it that they like and value.
I think what people do though is then they fall back on density and things and then that's what I'm scared of. I'm scared of people focusing on, on things that aren't really preserving the character, but, but they're measurable things that people can get behind.
Kind of talk about historic facades or...
Yeah, there's, there's a measure of housing. You can't like see that.
But we see it over and over. Like, like, so yeah, how, how do we, how do we talk about character and leave room for building out housing and all the other goals we have?
Well, let's identify what about that character makes it that, that we value. Is it like architectural detailing? Is it, you know, scale and massing? And if so, like what about it? Those are all like tangible things that you can...
It's property value.
I mean, that's, that's also something we could look at and, um, I should add probably a layer, right? Got a 3D rendering of property value per acre. Like, we probably want to increase the value of our properties in Montpelier if we want these levels of services. So what kinds of development, what does that look like? Um, there are clear patterns, you know? The stuff we built, ironically, the stuff we built after zoning is worth a lot less than per, on a per acre basis than what we built before zoning. So we need, you know...
Just zoning in general, not our recent zoning changes?
No, no, no. Right, right, zoning in Montpelier, zoning in Montpelier.
This planning commission ruined.
I'd like to submit my letter of invitation.
Okay.
I think that's a great point though about defining character.
Oh, yeah, it's really hard.
It's going to be one of the biggest challenges.
But, but we don't have to define it. We can focus on actual things.
Yeah, exactly.
Little each person, so what does that mean?
Right.
So retain historic nature of close street neighborhood. No, um...
Not going to put that one in there. We can put, what do we do over here?
Now, there's been some talk about NECA leaving, right?
Yes.
Is that something we want to, you know, signal that we would like to keep them here? I don't know if we can do it through this, but we could at least say, you know...
Yeah.
Maintain presence of schools, you know, beyond, beyond the public school system, having higher education available is important.
Yeah, I mean, I think those would both fall into our education plan, which we're required to have, and our economic development plan, which we're required to have, both of which are going to touch on those, maintaining those opportunities.
Because I don't think we had any input on that during our all committee kickoff meeting. I think anybody's goals were to maintain higher education institutions.
Invocational.
You know, one question we had during the zoning is for a number of these areas, what is the, right, what is the vision?
Maintain, we already had a maintain for Hubbard Park Trail.
What about a, a park in District Three?
I don't, I don't know my districts.
That's the south of Berlin.
Basically behind my house. Like in my...
Behind, park behind Leslie's house.
Yes, that's what I want.
She's going to donate her backyard, in fact.
Actually, we have a network of trails back there that are privately owned. But yeah, somewhere in that realm there or on Berlin Street or, you know...
It's certainly in the council's goals, has been to study that, so...
That could be a question or comment, you know, do we want to have access to, because the closest playground to me is elementary school, I think, which, you know, we can manage, not that far. Park slash playground in District Three, that's what I would write. Yeah.
There'd be a transformer and evolve.
That's a good question.
There's, there's not much there to evolve, to evolve, right?
It's just woods. There's like a farm somewhere in that area.
Sugarine Farm.
Yeah. We own 50 acres behind the little, our field street, and that's like right outside.
So we have a donor for the park. That's excellent.
Yeah, or probably something, but I don't know.
I don't know. I guess, I'm not going to start adding caveats, but I think if we understand like these points are not intended to be exact or someone sees like, bring a park on my property.
I think, I think an evolve that's along the same lines as what we just did, that's more of an evolve than a transform, is to evolve the... is to evolve the winter recreational environment in Montpelier. I feel like, we don't, things don't have to be so dead in winter, and I think this goes into economic development, some other things. Climbing gym, greenhouse, there's like attractions that could be like winter, give you something to do in the winter.
Like, are there any, what's the status of the stump dump?
What do you mean by status?
Still a dump.
Still? When is it open?
No. Who controls it? Can we do anything with it?
Uh, it is, it is public works.
Is it worth considering?
It is public works and is primarily used, it is used as a stump dump still. It is the old city landfill, so it is a, has a classification in there for that. But it's used for the stump, and it's also used for, for snow dump as well. It is one of our last ones we have left.
I thought that's what we use the Ma Street for.
Oh, dumping snow? Let's just plow it there and leave it.
Because that's what's been happening.
Oh, yeah, well, there's, there's not enough space to deal with all the snow.
Yeah, we keep, the unfortunate part is we've lost a number of our snow dumps with changing rules, so... We used to use a lot of our floodplains for snow storage, and we can't use our floodplains for snow storage anymore.
Dump snow into woodneerski.
Happens a lot, so, it happens a lot still, even though it's against...
I have a photo from Kirby's deck, not even, just her window, of all of the various private...
It used to be, it used to be floodplains, though, they used to go under the, there used to be a large snow dump under the I-89, so they used to just go down there, park it on, dump it on the land, and let it melt there, but we can't use that one anymore.
Yeah, my first floor of my house is very thankful that that doesn't happen anymore, because it's not as at much risk of being underwater.
Ooh. Going up this way.
Well, up to Wrightsville.
How about we maintain protection of the floodplain, floodplain?
Yeah, river, river, river border.
River border, thanks, Mike. So, Aaron, was there one of the stump dump that you wanted to add?
No, I was just curious. I didn't know what.
If there was an opportunity there that was not being...
Sounds like there's no opportunity.
There are some trails that you can...
Definitely.
Yep, there is, the trails do come in and go around it on the hillside.
Yeah.
South side of it.
Good to see Google Maps finally updated the stump dump road to Finch Road.
Was it called Stump Dump Road?
It was, yeah. Because there were no other houses on it, so it used to be just called Dump Road, and then we changed it to Stump Dump Road. And then once a residential development appeared on the north side of the road, they requested that their mailing address not be Stump Dump Road, so...
And their property is beautiful. With lots of finches. I think so, I don't know.
Seems like at the, at the least, we could come up with multiple uses out there, like, if there not been.
Rather than just one?
We, we studied it for the solar, we studied it for solar and it didn't work for solar.
Well, not just the way that the...
The way the landscaping, the, the hill kind of goes up, and so that's why we ended up with the city's solar farm is at Log Road instead, which is just a little bit further north.
What's going on with, um...
Redstone?
Redstone.
Uh, there was an auction, so that is a state-owned, was a state-owned, still is a state-owned, yes. Alan Goldman won the bid, but they, I think it's been a little bit of time, but he hasn't yet closed on purchasing it from the state. He's won the bid but hasn't closed on it, so we don't know what's going to happen with it until that step happens.
Is there some crazy plan to connect to Long Trail from there, or am I thinking of something else?
Yeah, that was in the newspaper. Okay.
I think, he, he said that.
He owns a number of, owns a lot of land, hundreds and hundreds of acres. And so his land goes from there, he owns the land that's all the trees to the west, and a lot of that extends out towards the Worcester range, where he thought if there was an organization that could help connect some other parcels, that you might be able to connect to Worcester, where we could connect up with the Long Trail and...
To save?
Oops.
It botched it.
You got, yeah, you could be...
Really not, not used to, using your, your computer here.
As far as big housing transformations, though, yeah, that right there.
That would be great, perhaps.
That's walking to downtown, closer, closer than Bailey, right?
Yeah. Be good for high school students.
Make that happen.
What about, and I don't know if this is part of the city plan, but human services, like, I feel like we didn't hear much about that from maybe the groups that were at that meeting, but has there been, I don't know, any talk of the human service community and what resources are important or what they might need? I don't know where we would find that.
What are some examples of human services?
Well, like, I don't know if I'm thinking of... I mean, I'm thinking, my husband is on the board of a drop-in center for psychiatric survivors, like, so I'm just thinking...
How can we promote?
Yeah, I mean, just for the, because I, I don't know, sometimes talking about all the smart girls and stuff is great and the energy stuff, but I feel like we're talking to a certain group of people in Montpelier, and I just am wondering about, um, if we can live in Montpelier and what their needs are.
Yeah, so community services, we will have a chapter, and I think we have to have a chapter on, on services. And so community services will be one of those chapters. So we have a senior center, we have our recreation, not just recreation facilities, which might be on a facilities plan, but we also have services that go along with that, daycare, after-school programs. So as, as planners, we kind of have these three bubbles that overlap in a lot of ways, so... The stuff we always focus in on are those, those built natural resource pieces. You know, a lot of what we've talked about here, streets and sewers and all these other things. And then you've got the second bubble, which is economic development. And then there's the third bubble, which is people, and that actually ironically ends up being the one that we forget about the most, are those social, social capital, and it's more difficult to, to plan for them, but at the same time, those are just as valid, planning, planning topics in, and...
Well, it's good there is space for it.
Yeah, we, you know, equity and those types of issues, social equity, racial equity has a place.
Put in a point somewhere downtown, just anywhere downtown. Yeah, I'm not...
I think maybe coming up with some organizations to reach out to, to get ideas from. I think Downstreet's one.
Yeah.
In each, each chapter, again, we talk about econo, we talk about education, we have adult basic education services. So even when, within our education chapter, we might talk about the school facilities and how much they could support and how much capacity they have. We can really talk about it in a bricks and mortar, nuts and bolts kind of way, but we can also talk about its link to economics and how, you know, are we doing a good job of preparing kids for future economic opportunities? And we can also talk about the, the social, you know, human interaction and those services that are available to people that aren't physical, you know, they're about job training and retraining.
So like identify human service-related needs and priorities?
So I'd always encourage, when, when those types of things come up, because that's always going to be the thing that, you know, certainly, I'll call that my fault. My weakness is the, the human services and the social services and remembering to include that component. So if you, if you think we're missing something, it probably means we are and we should be thinking about things.
One thing I'm aware of that, that the entire state needs is recovery beds, so for drug addiction, there's, the state's done a lot in the last few years to help with treatment, and you can get at least some treatment in Vermont relatively easy compared to how it used to be now. But then recovery after treatment, there's almost nothing. And almost everything that does exist is in Burlington. So that was one thing I was going to bring up, was it fits into housing, it also fits into the services. This chapter that we, that we're talking about fits into both, but, yeah, having more of that.
Yeah, yeah, there was a lot of work that was done in the housing committees about homelessness in past couple of years, and that's one that, you know, we talk a lot about housing, but we don't talk about what are the services that are needed to support that transition from homelessness back to housing.
Is there anything going on with Saban's pasture recently? Or what's, what's...
It's been silent the past year, at least on my front, downstairs, so, you know, certainly when the zoning was going through, there was a lot of discussions about the potential and possibilities, but ultimately at the end, we haven't heard much. But that's not to say that there isn't something, somewhere percolating, but nothing that has made its way to, to my office downstairs.
Does the same family still own it?
Yes. Yep.
Zorzy's?
Yeah, Zorzy, Aja family. Although the parcel, if you look to the left of the screen, west, there is, that part of that is owned by the college. So there's, you see that one field, that's owned by the college. So there's this, there has been discussion of a potential project of a cottage cluster, senior housing facility to go in there.
But I didn't put slopes on here, but that's also...
Yeah. The slopes plays a big part of all these discussions for, for those. But it's a good, you got some good data layers in there. Some of those I don't have.
Must have been a cold day.
Yeah, this was, uh, last year. We, uh, these are our, those, we struggles to get. You can see a bit of snow still.
Oh, yeah.
The leaves were ready to pop.
Did we remove the museum?
Yeah, we did. I deleted that.
That could get lost.
Before that goes public, get rid of the museum.
Get rid of it.
I'll get a call from Eric Gilbertson in the morning.
There was some talk about moving the historic building where faux capital is located. Isn't there?
Moving it?
Forward towards the street?
Yeah, there, there's been a proposal, because there, there is an application. Is there an application? Well, certainly it's not a secret that there has been, the, the old gas station that was at the corner was purchased and demolished, and it's a, there will be a proposal to redevelop at that site. There was a discussion about potentially trying to move faux capital back up to the street, but that, as far as I know, has not materialized, so I think they're still moving forward with their plan to build a new structure there.
Safe to say that for this ocean of parking here, that we want to work towards a maybe better use of it over time.
Yeah?
No.
How about that greenhouse Kirby was talking about? Indoor water park.
People would come. If you build it, they will come.
Five-story skateboard park.
A pool would be great. Just a, just a small lap pool with twenty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Just think of a greenhouse where you could like go and walk around somewhere where it's actually like warm. Activity that's warm.
Who owns a lot of space back there? Is that part of the Capitol complex, like this?
It's not in the Capitol complex, but the state owns the parking lot to the left, right there. That's owned by, and then the other gray parking is owned by the insurance company.
And then this is the coastal space.
And courthouse parking, so...
We, we heard some proposals to put a garage in behind 133 State, behind the Department of Taxes there. And that seemed like something that is appealing.
Put in what?
To, to put a garage in there. Because that's, as opposed to the pit, which is much more complicated with multiple landowners. This one's just the state.
You have, the state wanted their own parking, they probably would be opting for one over here.
Because I think that the parking lot near where the Gertan Park is and the river, we should try to move away from that one to the right, yeah.
Yeah, transform the...
Right there, transform into green space, or, I don't know, river-oriented.
Or any type of redevelopment, if it was residential or...
Yeah.
We have to disengage the, the river there.
I don't think people would want to live that close to a highway.
Hmm.
Just residential.
Yeah. I'm not surprised, though.
It would have to be like a mid-rise sort of thing, like the, like the Taylor lot.
Yeah. And I think this goes to the, the, most of the projects that we saw for net zero Montpelier competition, there were a lot of ideas in there that we could certainly kind of throw, throw into that site.
What about this gateway, we tried to raise this earlier?
Yeah, well, I've got the question over here about what our vision is for really this entire area to the east and the south. And then, you know, the neighborhoods up here, you know, what, what if anything are their needs and what have they articulated?
What's happening in that space where the rest of us lives?
Nothing yet.
It's clean, but they're just...
Well, I think we need some sort of connector, pedestrian connector up there. I mean, people can walk up and down Northfield Street, but it's pretty busy and...
Right.
And the sidewalk ends, right, like the orange deck or watch.
Yeah.
Oh, does it, even after the, even after the project was, Northfield Street project was done?
Yeah, it doesn't go north or south, rather.
Just gonna put...
I'll have to see the gap analysis, see if that's another one that we flagged.
Yeah.
But I know one of the, the goals that we had before when we did the zoning was that we wanted, we may not get mixed-use neighborhoods, people like their residential neighborhoods, but we did want them to be walkable to an area where they might have some. And this is an area that really, other than the hotel...
The Grange.
Doesn't have that many opportunities for...
Do you live in this district too?
Uh, no, I live, I live on Liberty Street.
Oh, okay.
But my parents own apartment buildings up there.
Oh, okay.
And a couple of my friends live up there.
Yeah, I'm the only one on this commission who lives in that part of town. Everyone else lives in districts one and two. I'm the sole voice for District Three here. No, I think that I did the whole commission, thinks comprehensively about the city. I'm not going to. But yeah.
I just want to park my backyard.
Sort of that, John, since you were in that neighborhood, there's that residential neighborhood kind of, oh, you're, you're, you're classifying everything behind National Life and over there as part of one, I see. Yeah, okay.
And I put improved neighborhood connectivity.
Yeah, do you want to put something near the Econo Lodge, like encourage development of restaurant or bar? That would be pretty sweet, right there.
Big fan of.
Nice, a nice British pub or something?
A nice British pub would be great with some trivia and a different.
Does the city, does the city own that parcel though?
No, we don't. It's still owned by the Econo Lodge folks.
Fish and chips, I'd be wishing.
A pub would do well, in my opinion. Note to people watching the TV.
But I'm sure when we talk to our, to Laura and the folks who are doing economic development, they would certainly be looking for sites that are available for redevelopment. And that might be one of them. At the same time, transportation may come in and say, that's a great place for our park and ride lot to the downtown. So we'll probably get a couple of different ideas from folks that we would have to weigh in the end.
What are you picking over there?
I don't know. I just don't know what, what National Life is up to. It does feel like it's an underused or a specific area with more potential. You have sort of these incredible views in lawn here that gets used once a year.
We've had the proposal for the gondola up to National Life to get people up there. And then the proposal to have residential development up there. So that way it becomes more of a village. It would have the residential and, and these other opportunities. It's all owned by National Life, so it's something they would have to either partner on or support, but.
They seem to be very engaged in the community they support. I mean, basically their name is on every event I've seen. You know, every single playbill and poster, so.
We've run out of ideas, John.
We're done.
Yeah.
We.
Vision of the future. Would it help to delegate some things for each of us to kind of interest that we're, we have to come back with some ideas for? Is that something people are interested in? Like, like looking at human services organizations to reach out to?
That's okay. I'm happy to do that. Maybe I'm too tied into that world already. Too close to, but I'm happy to do that.
May as well leverage, yeah, leverage that. Anything else we need to, feel like we need to come back and?
We can probably get a, well, maybe this goes within the same template of the other sort of goals, but a, a non-mat-based list of what our vision and maybe strategies are.
Yeah, I mean.
Add that to the page.
In our Google Drive, we have the notes from the, the top priorities from various committees. Maybe we could all just review that and plug in some of the ideas that we thought are a good idea. And maybe a specific homework item for you, Emory, is to think about any kind of complaints or ideas that you've heard from people your age who don't drive.
I hear like a lot, like everybody who lives like past Northfield Street, like about how dark and shady it is kind of like on the walk.
Oh.
Like there's no sidewalks really and it's kind of dangerous.
Maybe more lights.
Are there still people making that walk even with that?
Yeah, like some of my friends and their parents can't, like, they have to walk from middle school all the way up to that little, like near the number eight.
Yeah.
Is it with a, is there a bus or is it?
No, there's no buses from middle school.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
But what's at the number eight? Is that just where they live or they?
Uh, yeah, it's just kind of the.
They have colonial drive.
Oh, okay. So they live in that area, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so they have to walk home and it's kind of sketchy at night.
They usually walk down here, but now that they've had some.
Logging?
Yeah. Occasionally gone down this way and it's just not fun.
Yeah. I mean, it's better than it used to be with the project, the recent project. I mean, I used to, I run up and down it sometimes, runs from and to work. And it has improved, but it's just a very narrow area. I don't know that there's a lot we can do for expanding it to make it safer, but maybe more lighting.
Yeah.
That's helpful. I guess you can work with me.
Are there other map layers to be, any ideas of things that people would like to see?
If you're adding slopes.
Put the slopes up.
I'd be, property values, you can do that or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
The values will be based on the city's appraisal, I take it?
Yes. We could adjust it with the CLA. We can just leave it as our.
It doesn't change much between, when you're comparing across.
Right.
You raise everybody's CLA.
It's not necessarily reflective of market value.
Right.
What's CLA?
The common level of appraisal. So it's just a factor that the tax department calculates and will multiply for the purposes of the equalization payments for schools.
It just, it's to make up if you're trying to compare Montpelier to other towns, but we're not really doing that, so.
But it is always a good, interesting model to take a look at when you're looking at various projects. Cause you think, you know, oh, one tractor supply that must be worth this much. And then you start realizing how much, like, if that were five houses, five houses would have generated more taxes than one tractor supply. It's because of the way of.
Right. If you look at like China Star and, and the tattoo place, you know, not what most people would think of as high rent places, but this one parcel generates a lot of tax revenue per acre because it's used so efficiently, has something like, I don't know, 20 apartments and three businesses in it. So if you take that and you multiply that over a block, that's a tremendous amount of value compared to a number of other maybe less efficiently used places around town, around neighboring towns.
I have a question. Has there been, I've, I've been in the discussion about Stone Cutter's Way. It seems just kind of random that we've got a street just kind of nestled in there, but.
I'm sure that Tom McCardle could give a nice broad history of that. Because it was state rail yard and I don't know if it's still owned by the state and we lease it or if it is actually been transferred to the city.
I think that would be a nice pedestrian path.
I've also heard in, you know, a one-way street and McBarry a one-way street on the opposite direction. Especially in the winter, that's not a great idea because Barry is absolutely horrifying.
Yeah, they both, they both are right now. I mean, it's just been a really terrible year for that. I read it in the bridge. No, you can tell. If you drive around town, you can tell.
The puddles in my neighborhood?
Yeah.
All everywhere.
I don't know if this is a point for the mat, but I think it's something that we have to think about as we have these downtown discussions and that's the existence of the brownfields and contamin, there's contaminated sites. So we should all be aware of that.
Yeah, it's a layer, maybe more.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's something that's going to definitely affect what actually gets built or what happens because it, it puts limitations on especially the cost of putting something in each of these sites. With my understanding, it's pretty much all along the river there. There used to be industrial stuff, pretty heavy in Montpelier at one point. Before, there was a lot of regulation.
I think there's economic development opportunities in this area too, down.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, down in the Montpelier Granite Works and those other buildings in there, I think have been proposed for redevelopment.
What'd you say?
Uh, QZ, I don't know.
Yeah.
What was, the butcher shop?
How do we bring the butcher shop back? Can we just put that on here?
I would take that. That was my neighborhood bar for a while too.
Yeah.
But I think there's a lot of, there's opportunity in that area and enough people live there, there could be more.
Yeah. Doing with the new bike, huh? We get a more accessibility.
And now Calidonia Spirits further down, there's like, there's, there's opportunity.
We do need a bunch of that.
The Perry Street's done a lot.
There you go.
So the gateway near there, we had, we brought that up. It, it's kind of related to this area of the city and the, it seems like you can commute by foot between the two of those. Are we thinking like industrial for the gateway? Cause that's like, seems like the only place that we have in this.
For this area?
Yeah.
Down by the roundabout? Of course. What is the Cross Vermont Trail? Aren't they doing something with the bridge over there or?
It's being built right where you see the words Vermont Patient Alliance. It's going along that old country club road. And then it goes down and it's coming back out over by Agway and.
Yeah, one of, one of the tough questions that a lot of communities struggle to address and, and deal with is when it comes to characterizing the purpose of various roads and streets is we have streets that are places for people. We have businesses and homes and that people should take kind of priority in terms of the design and the function. So it's okay that cars are slow there. And we have other road infrastructure that are designed or should be designed to move large volumes of vehicles. So, you know, obvious one is Interstate 89. So it's best to pick one and go forward, forward with that. And oftentimes people try to split the difference and they think they could make both. So then you have all these trip generating uses with curb cuts on roads that are intended or originally were intended to move lots of cars that then become congested and are terrible places for people to walk on. And they now no longer serve any function in terms of, they're not great at moving cars. They're not a great places for people. They end up being very expensive in terms of infrastructure and very low in terms of yielding tax values. So they become a net loss. They increase our taxes because they aren't paying for the infrastructure that they're using. So identifying, you know, what are areas that'll be, that we are going to consider streets and invest in for things like sidewalks and other areas where really they should be limited in terms of uses that generate trips. And, you know, we're not going to be places where we want to encourage high levels of activity. And oftentimes things like industrial uses can be good potential. Uses there where they require maybe more space. They don't generate as much traffic or the traffic that they generate is maybe more truck oriented and you don't want on your streets. So that's, you know, a discussion we can have around some of these spaces over here. I don't know. It's not, it's, it's not something we've, we've talked about much.
It seems like our options are actually quite limited. It seems like Route Two is.
In 302.
Yeah, is, is about it as far as having those options, right? For us, the traffic moving type options.
Yeah, and where does it, where does it start and end and, yeah.
And we had a lot of discussion with that in our complete streets plan, the street typology. So as we get into talking about transportation plan, that's what we would probably be talking about those exact things that they had to address when they were looking at that, which is, you know, what is, what would be our perfect river street in Berlin Street? You know, if we were to lay it out, we would have, you know, X vehicle traffic and we need pedestrians to, if we're doing complete streets, we have to address how the pedestrians move through here. How do bikes move through here and how do cars move through here? And we have to make sure we've accommodated all of them. And in some cases with Northfield Street, we have failed to provide for all of our users. We aren't addressing how pedestrians move through this space. So that would be flagged in our transportation plan as a deficiency that they may take. You know, some of these may take, you know, decades. You know, we're missing sidewalks on East State, but that's because it would cost three quarters of a million dollars to build the retaining wall to keep that sidewalk going on East State. Just because there's just a cliff there. So some things just take time and lots of money to fix, but it's, it's still there as a need. It just may be more difficult to fix.
Get rid of a cliff.
Just keep filling it. Yeah, there's the sidewalk gap on a little bit farther up, I think. Yeah, that's where it crosses over.
Just crosses, right?
See, that's where it crosses and there should be. You know, it's a pretty busy area that, that road has enough pedestrian traffic that it should have sidewalks on both sides. But it has a gap.
Should we shut this down?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we should take this back up after our public hearing. So we have a little bit during our next meeting and then come back to this.
Well, I think we'd be able to roll out and things in between, so we'll take a look. And get a little more out.
Yeah, can you go through how you got here again?
So if you go to, if you go to montp.city or plan.montp.city, it'll take you to the same place. And you go all the way to the bottom of this page.
Oh, yeah.
There's the links to the two maps here.
And these are open just to planning commissioners at this point or is it open to the public?
Anyone can, can view them.
But they won't be able to add ones.
But they, right. And if you log in with your Gmail addresses, which all of you have, then you can edit and, edit the map.
And if you can't edit, send John an email.
Send me a note. You can also edit this website. Anyone?
So should we, should we just have a place on the agenda then to revisit like every time? Just to see if anyone's added anything so they can go over with the group? And in that way track?
Yeah, let's do that for now.
What we do in between meetings?
If you didn't add anything at all, come prepared to something to add on that meeting.
Yeah, read a plan, come up with something.
Is there like a broad timeline for this, for the city plan?
My.
Turn the lights back on.
Yeah. My hope has been that it, it's 12 chapters at a minimum, so that's going to take time to work its way through. So I've kind of said if we were done by the end of, and I mean like done with the whole plan and ready to go to public hearing by the end of 2020, I'd be happy or even if it was adopted, I would be shocked just because it takes. Once we've come up with stuff and once we've gone to the committees, you know, if we're going to be inclusive, it takes time. If we want to write our own plan and just roll it out, then we'll get crushed, but we can get it done faster. So we really want to come up with proposals, work with the committees, work with the public. And, and then I think we'll, we'll end up. And and then I think we'll we'll end up with a very really strong plan. Within that timeframe.
We could also, here was, if you go. The energy part here, it takes you to this folder in Google Drive, which has the. Tables and, you know, spread, not everyone loves spreadsheets, so there are other ways to kind of. Make this more accessible, but this has the idea of the vision. The goals with, you know, target date, data source. Priority ranking. And then strategies. They have it so that committees, if they wanted, if we wanted to set these up for committees, can basically select when they think it's ready to go to the PC and they can have it all come together in one one place.
And and a lot of this is some of the stuff I'm going to be trying to kind of get prepared to help. Set the table for them because it is a little bit complicated and. We had some models on how to have the conversation. So it was consistent in how they all connected together between your aspirations or your visions and then your goals and your strategies.
I need to leave a little early. I just made a couple of notes on these minutes. Just a couple typos and a vote that needs to be changed.
Oh.
Oh.
Your computer back.
I didn't shut it off.
It's okay. You you probably want this stuff.
Yes.
Thanks a lot for your work, John.
Yeah. Dude, it's a long time ago. Except for that other map, which I did moments.
It was still great.
It was.
If you're going to vote on the minutes now, we might as well just stay.
Well, do you want to have anything else about the city plan? I think we can move on to the minutes and.
I moved it through the minutes.
Hold on, hold on, I have some edits.
I think we have some edits.
John, John has made the motion. Do we have a second? Just so we can start discussion?
We can.
Second.
All right, Aaron's got the second.
I accept Leslie's edits.
On your, on the first page. Under the final punch list item for zoning fixes, the last. paragraph in the second sentence, just a small typo, but it says the administrative officer should have a way of settlements or coming into compliance. Or of coming into, it should be for coming into compliance, I believe. Just to be clear.
All right.
But the section was too structured to do all that. Okay, that's the first edit. Second edit, the second page, under the motion to warn a hearing on bracket date, blah, blah, blah. The second sentence says the best way to process with the city plan, so I think that should be proceed instead of process.
Oh, proceed.
Yeah.
I had planning commissioner, she was the.
Oh.
Where are you? Where are you? Where are you?
Hi, I'm. High five, see you later.
And then the final edit is right above the adjournment. The last sentence before adjournment is. The motion passed on a three to zero vote with those who had been in attendance at that meeting. I am fairly certain that I also joined that vote, so it was a four zero because I knew we needed four.
We needed four, correct.
So that would be my final correction.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can handle this.
Hi.
Here. You got them?
Is everyone okay with the changes?
Yeah.
Okay. So should we vote on approving the minutes with Leslie's changes?
Assuming John.
Yes.
Adopt something in his motion.
So. Yeah, I pre-accepted the.
I appreciate the.
Be pre and post-accepted, we'll take it. Okay, so with Leslie's changes. Friendly amendment, blah, 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 rules of rules and stuff. Do we have a vote? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All against?
Got love when the lawyers get to blah, blah, blah rules.
Yeah. Okay. The minutes are approved and that leaves us with number seven.
I'm going to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Okay. Not not debatable. Yeah. And we are adjourned.
Okay.